Call the regular Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting of, what is this? Tuesday, September the 14th. To order, may we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here, and Pleasant Ridge.
Clearly, yeah, that's I'm here.
First item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. If anyone has anything that is not on the agenda, like Woodward Heights is on the agenda.
I know it's on the agenda, but I do have.
Okay, please come forth and give us your name and address.
My name is Howard Smith, and I live at 60 Woodward Heights Boulevard. And it is a little bit to do with Woodward Heights, but it's not about the calming that's going to happen on it. I'll discuss that when we discuss the issues with Woodward Heights. And we need more people to come here and support us on Woodward Heights. To all you watching this YouTube video, get in here and make a comment.
That'll work.
So, my concern is, the past month or so, 11-mile road's been detoured down Woodward Heights. The railroad tracks at Nine Mile is closed. And then on the weekends, they close I-75, and we absorb all that traffic. Over the Dream Cruise, I saw the Pleasant Ridge cruisers go down Woodward Heights twice on Friday. None on Saturday, but I did see numerous state police cars, county sheriff cars, and Ferndale Police Cars, but never Pleasant Ridge. When these events go on in Pleasant Ridge, or in Ferndale, Woodward Heights becomes the alternate route. And I never see any policing during that time, and I'd like to. Right now, the traffic is the worst I've ever seen it since we've lived there. Trucks belting through, the other day I was trying to make a doctor's appointment. Five DTE energy trucks went through it a row. I couldn't hear the phone on the phone, I had to wait until they went by, and then I smell the diesel exhaust coming through my house. If it was your house, your house, your house, your house, yours, yours, or yours, you'd be furious. You'd be doing something about it. I'm sick of it. Something's gotta be done. If the police department can't manage to get control of trucks, maybe we need new management in the police department. I'm just fed up with it. You know, I see DTE trucks come through all the time. I see Comcast, I see Consumers Energy, they're not doing anything. They're just cutting through, some nut mixers. I followed them down to the construction site on John R. The GFL garbage trucks, shredder trucks. A car transport goes through there all the time loaded with used cars. And sometimes late at night, flying through there blowing the stop sign. Somebody's gonna get killed on the street, and I wanna see some action, some police protection on our street. They have time to patrol Woodward, they have time to patrol our street. Pleasant Ridge can't be that crime-infested to where they don't have the time to spend on our street patrol it. We're taxpayers, we want protection over there. Police Department should address problem areas in the community. I feel we're being ignored by our police department, I'm fed up with it. That's what I wanted to say about that, and then I'll say some more when we talk about the Woodward Heights calming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. We will be discussing a lot later. Okay. The next item on the agenda is governmental reports. I think the chief, oh, hello.
Hi. Look how excited we are for it. And I know I'm super casual tonight, because I did wanna show off our shirts. So if you see the department wearing these this month, they are, so September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. So this is in support of the Yellow Rose Campaign. So Ferndale Fire Department unanimously decided to participate. So for the month of September, you might see us wearing these shirts as a regular. And intentionally it doesn't say Ferndale Fire Department, because all fire departments, even beyond Michigan that are participating, it's, we just have generic shirts to show that we're standing in unity.
Oh, I love it.
And trying to reduce suicides and stuff in first responders, so, and community in general. So, that's why I'm so casual tonight, I'm kinda sporting the wear, so. But it is great to be here tonight and see you guys actually in person, it's kinda awesome.
Welcome.
All of you guys.
It's good to see you.
August was a busy month in Pleasant Ridge. We had 20 calls in Pleasant Ridge. So we were up here, you know, a lot, taking care of the community, which is, I'm glad we can. We had 12 EMS calls, one car accident, wires down, which, I know we have another storm blowing in tonight, so hopefully we don't get any more wires down. Some are prepared to be back into work tonight. Couple CO alarms, an odor investigation, and three fire alarms, so kinda all over, so a lot going on in Pleasant Ridge in the month of August. But, I think everything, none of the fires were significant structure fires, anything like that, so that's a great thing, we're keeping the community safe, so. But that, I think, he mentioned the railroad tracks, so you guys probably do know. And if you don't know the dates, it's supposed to be done the first week of October. So there's that little detour, which I'm sure affects all of us.
Did you see the first week of October?
Yeah, so it's supposed to be closed for three weeks, is the duration. So the first week of October is when it should open back up. Oh, there it goes, sorry. What, hopefully it's not a Pleasant Ridge call. So with that, let's see, that, trying to think, I had something else, and now I totally forgot, that distracted me. Did you guys have anything for me while I'm thinking?
I don't.
Nothing? So, we are hiring right now, which is awesome. We have five vacancies, which is big for our department, but we are hiring right now, so I'm hoping to get this staffed up. One of the things you guys will see, one of my plans I have for the fire department, is if I can get all our vacancies filled, as I'm working toward trying to staff two ambulances all the time, so I'll have one out of each fire station, so we'll have an ambulance on both sides of Woodward, which would be great for residents that live on the east side. So that's something when I have the staff, anytime I have enough staff working above and beyond our normal minimum, then we will be staffing up a second rescue, which would be great for the community, so.
Good, are you getting, are you getting enough candidates applying?
So I have, of the applications I took this time, I invited 30 applicants in for interviews.
Oh, good.
We're interviewing the first 14 in person, we did 10 interviews yesterday, we're doing the additional four on Thursday. And then I have 16 that we're doing in an open house format.
Yep.
To then wind those down to decide who we wanna bring in for in-person interviews, so.
That's great.
I'm hoping to get five candidates out of this pool, it's very competitive right now, because everybody's hiring, everybody's fighting for the talent, so. But it's encouraging that that many people wanna come and serve these communities, so that's a wonderful thing. It's, I think it says a lot for our communities and people wanting to come and work here.
Yep, good.
So it's a good thing, so.
Chief, thank you so much. You had some of your team members up at the Safety Day, which was very cool. The kids loved it, but the adults did too. So, thanks. Now, you guys were talking about doing home inspections for fire smoke detectors and, what's that, carbon monoxide poisoning?
Yeah, so what it is, is we provide a service that's, well, we provide a couple services up and beyond what a lot of fire departments do as a standard service. One of them is we do car safety seat inspections, so if somebody has, and a lot of people think about for infants when they're bringing their baby home from the hospital, but anytime you transition to a new type of car seat as your child grows, you can go up to the fire department, schedule an appointment, and we actually help you install it, ensure it's installed properly, and it's a free service we provide the community.
That's so great.
So you just have to call and schedule an appointment to make sure, because the, our staff that does that, they actually have to be certified. And it's a 40-hour class that they tend to become certified. So it's a very intense training process, just to learn how to put a car seat in. So we take it for granted, but we do have a core people that can provide that service. The other one you're alluding to is we do home safety inspections. And what that is, instead of, when we're out in public, we give very, kinda generic, general fire safety information. Hey, you should do this, you should do this, you should have smoke detectors in your home, you should have this. But when we do a home safety inspection, we come into your house and do a very personalized walkthrough of your home with you, and have conversations about safety in the kitchen, especially with the way your kitchen's laid out, and things to be concerned with. And walk through your home and talk about where your smoke detectors, if they're in the right place, if they're not, where they should be. People have questions about carbon monoxide detectors, and it's really that one-on-one interaction for about an hour, for us to go through and educate you on hazards and things you can mitigate in your home, and also just make you more aware and knowledgeable to prevent incidents in your home. So that's what that is, and we offer that free, also.
Wow, that's great. Maybe we just call the fire department to set that up?
Yeah, so you can call, if you go to the website, we're actually working on updating the website right now, and there's links. And we also created QR codes, and what I can do is I could bring some of those and drop them off here. Maybe at the community, and I'll try to put those on the site too, so people could just scan the QR codes. We have, there's a ton of events coming up, you know, this fall, you know, because Pick 'n Whiskey got moved to Halloween weekend, Pride is October 2nd, DIY in funky Ferndale is the 24th through 26th of September. The Hispano-American Festival is coming up too, so it's like, starting then, there's like, so, we're gonna be out at all those festivals, so people can always come visit us, but we'll have our QR codes out on the table. And that's great, so people can scan those for either car safety seat. You guys don't need the burning permits here in Pleasant Ridge, but we require them in Ferndale. Or the home safety inspection, I'll just take you directly to the link to schedule it. Otherwise, you can go right to the website, our fire department website, and the links are there also.
Wow, that's cool, thank you.
So we're working on really trying to make things electronic and very accessible to people. So we wanna promote, we wanna do the mitigation on the front end, as opposed to the response on the back end. So we're trying to up that and really increase that, for, over the next 12 months will be really dialed up.
That's cool. It's impressive you've already learned all the festivals and stuff.
That was pretty good. Yeah, I just wanted to, secondly, Commissioner Perry said that the Safety Day was awesome, and it was a great showing by Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale. Took my girls there, and it was great.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed it, I ended up out of town that weekend, so, or I was teaching, yeah, I was teaching that weekend, so.
Your team was great.
Yeah, they were.
I have great people, I couldn't ask for better people, so I appreciate that, and I'll send those thoughts back to them.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Good, I'm glad it didn't get rained out again. Does anybody else have anything for me?
No. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow.
I'm sure you can do it.
Good evening, everybody. I'll start with, with the new school year started again, so traffic again is an issue on Ridge slash Pine Crest over there. It's usually eight o'clock in the morning and 3:15, 3:20 in the afternoon, although people do, I've been there every morning that I work. People come 45 minutes early to wait in line until traffic starts backing up. So know that we're there every day, but tell the people that live here, and people in Ferndale and Oak Park that come up that way, try to avoid that area in the morning, because they get impatient, and then they pass over the double yellow and things like that. So everybody that lives in Pleasant Ridge, avoid lower Ferndale School, usually eight and three. And Wednesdays is earlier, they get out earlier at 2:28. The only real, August was a busy month, as you heard the chief say, which included Dream Cruise. Dream Cruise again went well, no incidents. Ford was wonderful to work with here, they rented the parks, and they had the Broncos and everything, and it was really a nice, they did a fantastic job with that. We had no issues with them, they took care of themselves, they did everything, it's wonderful to have that kind of event in our parks in Pleasant Ridge. It helps put us on the map. People have a tendency to stay northern, more of the freeway and everything, and the, you know, the Royal Oak, Huntington Woods, Birmingham area. But it's a nice venue to keep people down in the Pleasant Ridge, Ferndale area here. We did have an incident, it just reminded me of that. We had a, a young man that was, was he in his twenties? The missing guy, Dream Cruise?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, he, a little bit mentally handicapped, what seemed, escaped from his father, and he noticed it, and it was gone. We could tell, maybe even as long as five hours. So it was near the end of the night, it shut down, so we did everything we could, we kept everybody here. We went, Sergeant Reed and I, we were driving up and down, walking, showing his photo on the phone and everything, officers looked. We went as far up northern ends of Royal Oak and all the way to Eight Mile, back and forth. And the father was just living, the mom, the mother was on the phone at home and just giving the father, you know, a little bit of grief for losing him. But we put out messages on the lean and everything else, and thankfully, he was found Liburnoy and six, seven? Somewhere, he had walked to a BP gas station. And his phone was dead, he didn't, they called, and so, it was a good ending. Could've been, it could've been bad, but everybody was helpful and wonderful and everything in working with that. On Saturday, the 11th, we had a catalytic converter theft over on Fairwood, only one. And we're not immune to crime, but we did only have one. It was like about 5:00 AM, heard a crash, but they didn't report it till much later. And so, no effort on that. We're also, we have an officer retiring the end of this month, Officer Colesar, who's been with us about nine years, he retired from Dearborn Heights. And he's gonna call it quits here at the end of this month, so we're working on replacing, or trying to add another officer. And we had about 25 applicants as well since last Thursday. So we're currently trying to maybe add to that position. As far as, oh, I'll go with the AEDs. So the city, we recently replaced all our AEDs, automatic defibrillators, I brought one here. They're the newest, greatest thing. These are, Ferndale replaced a bunch of theirs, and we used to always piggyback what Ferndale Fire Rescue do, because we'd get the pads and stuff from them. This is one of the latest models, we put one in City Hall, this is one from the hallway here in City Hall, we have them in all the police cars. And we put two new ones, one at the pool, and one at the workout center, at the rec. They got a little bit different, it looks the same, but theirs is more intuitive for people that aren't really trained on it. So you just press the button, it goes through, tells you what to do, and everything's attached, everything, you don't have to do really a whole lot. The pads are attached, it comes with everything.
It looks friendly.
It is. And it's a bright color, it's like a safety vest, you can see it. So they're in the cabinets, they're no longer in the cases, so you don't have to unzip it or anything. So if anybody wants to be trained on that, we can do that here, the fire department can come and do that, like if staff or stuff wanna just learn how. It helps, I know I have two saves here, since I've been here in like 15 years, so they do work. Big advocate of them, and like I said, they're in all the police cars here in City Hall, and then at the pool and the workout center. And then I guess apparently the best for last, as far as Woodward Heights, just a quick topic, we're not gonna get into, we're there all the time. It's this most enforced residential street, that I've told and talked about. As far as Dream Cruise, officers, all officers are on Woodward Heights on Dream Cruise. If you didn't see them, you didn't see them. I know I was there because your neighbor had a party, that has the party, I can't remember his name. But all his neighbors are there, and I know I was by there probably two or three times. So as far as that, maybe you didn't see us, but we were there. And we continue to be there, and we'll be there when we can be there. And we can discuss more about that afterward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Chief, thank you, and your crew also for being at Safety Day. It was a really neat event.
And being the first one, we're, was a learning, we hope to expand and then do more, and then, would it, sorry. Would it keep getting canceled and moved because of weather? We learned a lot. We, I mean, we'd like to go where we have more with maybe like weather radios and all kinda things like that, and expand as we go, and see what other people do and stuff. But we got good feedback, and we had good participation, so, many of you were there.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to City Commission liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Budnick, Ferndale Public Schools, and the Huntington Woods Library Board.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll jump right into the library report, because I have it pulled up here. And that's brought to you by our friends Mary and Stacy. So, some new events and revamped gems and old favorites are back up and running for the month of September. First off, storytimes are back. The age groupings and times are slightly modified from the previous schedule. Babes in Books Storytime is Mondays, 11:00 AM for ages zero to 12 months. Tiny Tot Storytime, Tuesdays, 11:00 AM, and that's for ages 13 to 24 months. Little Readers Storytime, that's Wednesdays, 11:00 AM for ages two and three years. Preschool Readers Club, Wednesdays, at 1:00 PM for ages four and five. And Pajama Club Storytime, that's right up my alley, Thursdays, 6:30 for young children of all ages. So Amanda, you could go. No, that's great, so, a lot of, a lot of good things happening there. In addition, two more great youth reoccurring events are on the board. Wacky Science Wednesdays offers experiments with fun scientific projects you can take home. This month, you can make cloud dough, bath bombs, and resin charms. Right?
That sounds good.
Yeah. Once per month. You're invited, Mayor. Once per month, enjoy Super Saturday, where you can make your own fun craft project, all ages are welcome. And this month is, how do you pronounce that word?
Pointalism?
Leaf art? Anybody know what that is? Okay. Adult programming continues to offer the popular book discussion group and film discussion series with Dr. Tara Hayes, where this month will focus on the movie Once Upon a Time in Hollywood. And the speaker series features Mr. Ron Radamaker and The Best Kept Secrets of Michigan Backroads. So to sign up for events, yeah, a lot of fun stuff. To sign up for events, go to the Huntington Woods Library webpage at HuntingtonWoodsLib.org, or give them a buzz, 248-543-9720. And that is all for me today.
Oh, and I did notice that they are back to regular hours now. So they are open six days a week, I think, only one day.
Yep. So good stuff.
Yep.
Just a quick note, we might actually even fire up robotics this year, so it's a program that we're hoping to get started. Nationally, it starts on Saturday, and I joined the meeting yesterday, so.
At the Ferndale Schools?
Ferndale Schools.
Oh, that's great.
Is it, what ages does that involve?
Six, seventh, and eighth grade.
Six, oh, nice.
For this particular group, there's a high school group as well.
I've already heard from lots of parents that they're very excited you're gonna be on the board of that.
Yeah.
And then, did you get the postcard today from the schools that they're starting the free preschool childcare programs again? With Ferndale School? I meant to bring it, and I totally forgot, sorry about that.
No, thanks for adding that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Perry, Planning, DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA met on July 26th, in person, right here at City Hall. The Planning Commission reviewed and discussed, actually, the water infrastructure millage educational materials. It was a good chance for them to sort of have a preview of everything from, you know, with the millage that's going to be on the November ballot for water infrastructure, they were able to look at the executive summary and really review that. Look at the project details, as well as the, oops, I have that twice, as well as the frequently asked questions. And it's cool, it is all now up on the city website too, so you can, so everybody can access it. But you'll be hearing lots about this, but it was good because the Planning Commission, you know, thinks about those things too. But it was good because we got their feedback, and it was great to hear. They also were reviewing that the Woodward streetscape improvements are, which is on the east side of Woodward, north of Sylvan, right? Is scheduled to begin spring 2022. And so, it's exciting, lots of things will happen, like the island that I have always loved and embraced, even though we did just lose our tree that was there at the end of Devonshire, is, that actually will be moved and help with some traffic flow situations there. But then, but there's a lot that's going to happen, and I don't know.
I'll actually be talking about, I'll actually be going through all of that later.
Okay, so there you go. So we'll hear more, stay tuned. And then our next meeting's gonna be Monday, October 25th, at 7:00 PM. You know, depending on the virus and everything like that, we will figure out if we'll be here or where. So hopefully we'll see you all here October 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for you? Next, Commissioner Scott, and the Historical Commission.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone that participated in the garden sanctuary tour this past weekend. It turned out to be this, just an absolutely wonderful day for everyone. I think a lot of people were surprised by the seven gardens that were on display. It's just amazing what people have done to their yards over time. And again, thanks to everyone that attended, it was fantastic. So we're looking forward to doing it again next year. We might have homes and gardens next year, we'll see how things go. But, and I think we'll probably be looking for some more feedback on this time of the year. It seemed to work out really well for everyone to have it on a cooler day and a beautiful crisp day, so more to come on that. And I think that's all I have today.
It was beautiful. Those guys, your whole, that commission did such a beautiful job, you all, like, the gardens were stunning, and the event was so smooth. So thank you.
I don't sense it, and I just wanna tell you, people so enjoyed themselves. Like, people were so happy, there was a good crowd, it was such lovely weather, like, it was just a lovely event.
It really was.
My usual question, dead and now?
So I've joked and said, we call it how soon is now, sometimes, for those of you that are Morrissey fans. But we're so close. We are now in the editing phase, all of the chapters are done. They're giving one final read-through. I'm actually changing the, all of the boulevards and BLVVs to match, that's kinda where we're at now.
Nice.
We have an exercise of putting the right photos to each chapter, so that there's, you know, a nice flow to the thing. And then we'll send it off to a bookmaker, and then it'll be done.
Did you keep Anne's picture on the front?
Oh, it's, it's right there.
Excellent, thank you.
So it's very good progress on that. And I think I'll still leave the invitation open, that if you have photographs that you think are relevant to Pleasant Ridge.
This is why it's still going on.
But if you have pictures, by all means, I'll let anyone in the Historical Commission know, or bring them to me. If nothing else, it might be something that we keep in the museum, if not in the book.
Thank you, okay. Great, Commissioner Wall, Recreation Commission.
Okay. So, Sunday, October 10th, is the Fall Fast and Hay Ride. Concessions will be sold, hero and villain food truck, and treat dreams. Cider and donuts sponsored by Robert Campbell, pumpkins sponsored by Breiler. That's always such a fun event, all the kids love it, adults love it, everybody loves it. Come down and get some food, visit with your neighbors. Incidentally, the day before is the auction, which is a tailgate theme, which is a very cool situation too. It's gonna be, I just wanna explain it for a second, it's gonna be online bidding, so even if you don't go to the auction, you can still register to bid on all these things. The wall of wine will be in person, and then we're gonna have an in-person auction, right? And the tailgate theme is like a fall, we're gonna have a DJ, there's gonna be games, cornhole. So this is gonna be a really fun time, chili bar, all, you know, hamburgers, hot dogs, beer, wine. So, and it supports all the community. Just for those of you who don't know what the foundation does, they support projects in the community, like, they've paid for all the new, the equipment at the pool, all the new, like, furniture, the umbrellas. They paid for the small playground at Gainesboro. There's so many things over the years that they've instigated, so I just wanted to make a plug for that. Halloween movie at Gainesboro Park, that's super fun. Friday, October 15th, 7:00 PM, oh, good movie, Beetlejuice. Family-friendly movie, bring your own chairs and snacks. Teen trip to Cedar Point, still waiting for confirmation, so it's a maybe. Saturday, October 17th, 7:30 AM to 1:00 AM. $85 for residents, $95 for non-residents, they must be in 7th grade or older. Third Annual Halloween House Decorating Contest. I'm gonna say this, share your wicked ways and tales. How boo your neighbors by entering the haunted house decorating contest. This year's categories are as follows. Creepiest Skeleton Award, I like it. Entries will be judged on creepiest and most original, best decorated pumpkins, same thing, originality. Scariest. Entries will be judged on special effects and overall sense of fright. Judges' favorite, this category is decided by the judges. All judging is done by the PR Rec Commission. Please send a picture of your decorated homes addressed to Greg at G-C-A-L-B-E-C-K at CityofPleasantRidge.org by October 21st. It's really fun. High-dose flu shots, first date, sold out, Thursday, November 4th, 1 to 5. Get your flu shot at the Rec Center, sponsored by Walgreens in the city. I don't have the flu, I have allergies. Limited number of shots available, pre-registration required. Check your mailbox, but Fall Ridge are at the end of the month for more fun activities. Okay. I'm done.
A lot of fun stuff.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Uh, how does someone buy a ticket for the tailgate party?
PleasantRidgeFoundation.org. You can buy it, right? You can do it. There's a QR code, if you look on Facebook, too, on the website, just... And the thing is, we're not selling paper tickets because it's, we want you to register because the whole auction is online. So that, in case you were wondering. $50 till through tomorrow, and then it goes up to 60. It includes everything.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Amanda? Any other questions, period?
One other thing, will you still accept donations at this point?
Yes, we will accept donations.
Because I know Devonshire's block club is going to do a donation.
Oh, I'm excited. If you have a block and you want to, if you live on a block, you want to donate?
Okay, great.
And all the money goes to our study, so.
Mayor, I just had one thing. I just wanted to sit with Amanda and Connie and Greg that, from where I'm standing, it was a
Great season.
Great, great season, and I can't thank them enough.
Yes, great job in the pool. Fucking great season in the pool.
Everything, I was there almost every day. And it was always running smoothly, so kudos to the two of you.
The staff was amazing, the lifeguards, like, you were perfectly staffed. So many people did not have that situation, but thanks to your planning, it went down really well.
Love the furniture.
Yeah.
The furniture's beautiful.
I mean, it just looked, everything just looked beautiful. I really, it looked so clean and...
Very cheery. It was a happy season.
It was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you're happy you're done.
Yes.
Come on now. Oh, it is? Okay, we have a hard time from on the teen trip on the October 15th to Cedar Point.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I just want, because, you know, I love statistics. Chief Robinson talked about September being National Suicide Prevention and Recovery Month. And I just want to point out that, I was looking at some data. Michigan averages 1,500 suicides a year. And suicides are the second-leading cause of death for 5 to 14-year-olds, 15 to 24-year-olds, and 25 to 34-year-olds. And we know that in these days of COVID and everything else and all the other issues, that suicides have become more and more prominent. So it's extremely important, and I really appreciate your efforts and certainly the t-shirt and everything. And, and I think everybody needs to be aware of it. We just saw recently the, the young man that worked at, at, first at Holiday and then Market, and then went to Westbourne, who knew the wine. That's been announced, I mean, it's been publicly announced. And so, I mean, it's just, it's so prevalent in our society that we, we need to be very aware. So I'm glad you brought that up. I'm going to ask if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Fuck it.
Support? You got support? All right. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yeah.
Commissioner Budnich?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is the Woodward Avenue TAP Grant Application Update.
Thank you, Mayor. So this has been an ongoing topic of discussion. It kind of comes in and out of, I think, public consciousness. And I wanted to give an update tonight for two reasons. One, because our most recent TAP grant application, which was approved by the City Commission in February, has been going through the review process with MDOT. And this was probably our most, our biggest reach with a project application that we've made in recent times because this was for the road diet for Woodward. MDOT has gone through their review of that, and the news is generally good for the project as a whole. The parts that MDOT has objected to and required to be removed from the project are altered in our approach, are in Pleasant Ridge, basically. A little bit in Ferndale as well. So MDOT also asked for Ferndale to adopt a resolution acknowledging that their continued support for the project and also acknowledging that there will be some marginal travel time increases along the corridor due to the road diet, which we'll talk about in a minute. But MDOT wanted Ferndale on record saying that they realize this and they support this. And so then MDOT can always blame Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge for the complaints, which is fair. But I did want to talk about the holistic picture because that project is, is big for Ferndale, but it's really only a piece of what's happening in Pleasant Ridge. So that project being altered really only impacts about a third of the Woodward Frontage and Pleasant Ridge. The rest of the Woodward Frontage and Pleasant Ridge is also being handled through these other projects. We have an Eagle Stormwater Infiltration Grant, which we applied for in 2018. And then we had the separate TAP grant, which we received for the cycle track from Sylvan to Main Street, 696 and Main Street, which was, again, also approved by the City Commission when we applied for that. Those are approved and in design right now with MDOT, so I wanted to give an update, just so everyone has a good, kind of, full picture of everything that's happening on Woodward because there is a lot of discussion about this right now. So let's start at the beginning, at least the beginning from when, I think, most of this group started here. In the beginning, there was the WA3 Complete Streets Plan, which looked from Hart Plaza all the way to Pontiac. And that, that laid the groundwork for a lot of these discussions. One of the things that that Complete Streets Plan did not do very well was address Pleasant Ridge because the ditch, or I should say the underpass, but we call it the ditch, affects so many things for what we do in Pleasant Ridge. It's the reason why we have to change our approach on the road diet plan because of MDOT, because of, because of the presence of the ditch. So the WA3 Complete Streets Plan just sort of skipped over, you know, they said, "Look over here shiny things", and now we're into Royal Oak as they were going through. And we said, "Well, you know, what do we do?" So the WA3 helped Pleasant Ridge fund a 696 Complete Streets Study that was done by Gibson Associates. And if any of you were around at that time, it was a really fantastic planning process. That then formed the basis for a Main Street Lane Reduction Test. This is a photo from when we ran that test in 2015. Narrowed it down to one lane coming around the curve off of Woodward on a Main Street. We sharpened the curves that you can't drive along there at NASCAR speeds. And we then just let that sit for three weeks and collected data, and we found that it didn't really actually increase travel time at all. You still got through the light in one light cycle, even though cars backed up farther. Everything, it didn't create any backups, even though it felt like you might be a little backed up if you were in that line. It didn't affect travel times. The Pleasant Ridge Complete Streets Ordinance and Complete Streets Plan were adopted in 2015 by the City Commission. The Gibbs Study and subsequent Pleasant Ridge efforts were part of that. We have the Traffic Calming Manual, which is a later piece, which was adopted. The Neighborhood Bike Route TAP Grant, that was a collaborative grant that the City Commission approved, along with Royal Oak, Huntington Woods, Ferndale, Hazel Park. And it's a neighborhood bike route that goes through the neighborhoods, through this whole area. This formed the basis for the support for the TAP grant we got for the Woodward Cycle Track because it crosses Woodward, it's Sylvan and Oakland Park, so that's a designated bike route. The Cycle Track then connects to that to provide infrastructure for bicycles along Woodward. In 2018, we received the Streetscape and Cycle Track TAP Grants for the east side of Woodward. In 2018, we received a grant collaboratively, collaboratively with Ferndale for a Woodward bicycling and walking safety audit. That then formed the basis for the 8 Mile to 696 TAP Grant application. All of these came to the City Commission. All of them were approved by the City Commission before they, before they were applied for and then once they were done. So as you can see, this is the culmination of a lot of effort and a lot of groundwork that we've been doing over the years. All of these documents are available at CityOfPleasantRidge.org backslash Complete Streets. So if you want to review any of these or see any of these various documents from over the years, they're available there. So the overview is, basically, the, the green project is the Woodward Streetscape. That's going from the southern city boundary all the way up Woodward and then up Main Street to 696. That is funded by the Eagle Grant. We will be capturing a two-year storm. So that's, I think, 2.3 inches of water that falls within a six-hour period, I want to say, is a two-year storm. With all of the flooding and big weather events we've been having, I'm sure you've heard more about 100-year storms and 500-year storms and 2,000-year storms. Well, the two-year storm is the design basis for this project. So basically, any storm that's the two-year storm or lower, the water will be captured and infiltrated into the ground before it goes into the sewers. So we're chipping away at, you know, our old infrastructure. We have combined sewers, we don't have separated sewers. So it's a 100-year-old system, which is not designed for the realities of today. So this is one way of retrofitting in an urban area to capture some of that water and put it in the ground and keep it out of our sewers. The purple area is where the cycle track will go. So the cycle track and the Streetscape kind of overlay each other. They were, they're all designed together from Sylvan North. And then the yellow is the part of our infrastructure, which is part of the Woodward Road Diet Project. So that's where we will be doing some bicycle infrastructure on southbound Woodward from Poplar Park down to Oxford. Final design for this is still very fluid. We have to work through with MDOT to finalize that if it's approved. We'll talk more about the specifics of what that might look like soon. So again, the background for this, we got a $650,000 Eagle Stormwater Infiltration Grant with a 40% local match. The cycle track was a $400,000 TAP Grant with a 20% local match. So our east side, northbound Woodward, is a $1.5 million total project. 66% of that is grant-funded, 33% of that is local match. And the local match is provided by the DDA. So this is not using any property tax revenue or anything from the city. It's DDA revenue. They've been setting money aside and planning on funding this for a few years to come. So when we talk about what it looks like, this is more or less our design precedent. And when I say "design precedent", this is what we would love for it to look like when all is said and done. This is a different context. This is a much wider pedestrian area than we have to work with. But when we talk about the design precedent, what we're looking at is materials, layout, organization of space. You have the parking, and then you have a buffer zone between the parking and the cycle track. The materials you use on the, on the pavement to distinguish the cycle, the bicycle area from the other areas. The furnishings that you have along with the trees, and then, of course, the pedestrian space. So when you have the, the image in mind, this is what we want it to look like. And this is, this is what we're working towards along northbound Woodward. This is a similar organization. This is from Missoula, Montana. And this, this shows a little bit closer to the space that we have available to work with. We really only have 12 to 15 feet to work with out there. So what the, what we'll end up doing is it'll be a, a, a physical space that's similar to this with materials that are more similar to the image before. With the parking providing a buffer from, through traffic for the cycle track to provide a more comfortable experience. Of course, nobody is going to ride, we understand, nobody's going to ride a bike on Woodward if it's right next to the travel lanes. You know, if you're riding your bike on the sidewalk now, maybe you'd ride your bike there. But you have to have that buffer in order for it to be comfortable just with the environment that Woodward is. So combine this physical space with this material elements, and that's what we're working towards for the cycle track on northbound Woodward. You'll see here to the stone, it's a granite block that is going to separate the cycle track from the pedestrian space, so. When we talk about intersections, too, one of the things that often happens now is when a car pulls out to turn right onto Woodward at one of the streets, it stops in the crosswalk because you have to, that's basically where you have to stop in order to be able to see. So we're doing some things with design. This is from that Bicycle and Walking Safety Audit that was done through the grant from SEMCOG. So here what you see is we bring the cycle track and the pedestrian crossings away from Woodward and leave enough space for one car to pull through the crosswalks, waiting to turn. And then there'll be signage telling cars, if they're stacked up behind that car, to, you know, wait here until the car had clears. We know people always observe signs and follow them, so, you know, maybe it'll work. But at least that's the design intent, and most of the time, you only have one car waiting to turn anyways. So this is one way of improving safety for pedestrians and bicyclists by giving them space to cross behind a car. And this is particularly important because Woodward being a one-way street, if a car is waiting to turn, if a car is coming from the, if a pedestrian or bicyclist is coming from the blindside, they're often not seen by the car. So by providing space to go behind the car, it improves safety. And a car waiting behind a front car will be at a different angle that the, they'll be in the peripheral vision. So again, this is another one of the elements that we're looking to design into the Streetscape.
And it also allows the car to better see where it's
Correct.
Pulling out.
Exactly. Yes.
See around the perimeter.
Because otherwise your block, blocks, fine.
Yes. So it's better for the driver, it's better for pedestrians and cyclists. So when we talk about what's actually going to happen, this is the current aerial photograph for the condition along Woodward. So you see here that the changes are happening where the curbs already are. South of Sylvan, you know, there, there's no changes to the lanes. It's just providing stormwater infiltration area and more green, some plants and vegetation rather than just a sea of fading red brick pavers. So from Woodward Heights up to Sylvan, same thing. You can see some new trees, some new planting areas. Once we get north of Sylvan, the cycle track begins to develop. And one of the things that's happening is Woodward is actually a five-lane cross-section. On the right side of the screen there, if you count the lanes, it goes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 because we have three lanes on surface Woodward and two lanes going down into the ditch. So MDOT has allowed us to take that fifth lane that develops and to use that to move the parking lane out and then to use that extra space for the cycle track. And then we keep some extra space for green and sidewalks. So you see that starts to happen here. If I go back and forth, if you kind of see where that cycle track is between Maywood and Amherst, currently, that's a travel lane that will become cycle track. This is a preliminary design that we're working through. The cycle track is not going to be next to Woodward between Maywood and Sylvan. We're working to move the cycle track back and move some trees in between. We don't have parking to buffer along that stretch because of the Comerica driveways. But we are going to put some trees out there as a buffer. And again, to just provide at least, you know, six or eight feet of buffer between Woodward and the cycle track. And then as we continue northward, north of Amherst, this is where the parking really develops and the cycle track tucks behind the parking. And then you have your vegetation and trees, and then the sidewalk area. At Devonshire on the left that Anne was talking about, we can reconfigure that. There will be a new park space provided in part of that right-of-way, and then it'll be one lane. One of the things that that does is for cars turning right, you can see right now where the, where Devonshire splits around that U, the angle that the, that Devonshire approaches Woodward is very sharp. And you really have to turn, you know, it's an exercise to get your neck cranked around to be able to see cars coming on. So by reconfiguring it and coming in at more of a 90-degree angle, again, it provides better visibility for cars on Woodward. And when things do back up around that corner onto the turn, it provides a little bit extra distance for cars to stack up and cars be able to get out on Devonshire. So you'll see three lanes are still maintained on Main Street with the sharper turnoff onto Main Street to help slow down traffic there and to calm things. So that's that project. That's all happening, that's in design. Now, back to the Ferndale Pleasant Ridge Road Diet Project with the revised plan per MDOT. And Ferndale did adopt a resolution last night, 5-0. Their council adopted it 5 to 0. No lanes can be reduced in Pleasant Ridge. The reduction from four to three lanes for the road diet occurs in Ferndale. Bicycle infrastructure in the auxiliary fifth lane and parks is the plan we will use on southbound Woodward through Pleasant Ridge. Our request is a $272,000 TAP Grant request with 30% local match. Again, that's provided here by the Major Street Fund, so no property tax revenue would be used. And even with these changes, the important thing to keep in mind is that 87% of the Woodward corridor will still have protected cycle tracks. So even though this, you know, feels like a, a little bit of a loss, it's a, it is a, an important, important step. So the white areas where there will be protected cycle tracks through this new Road Diet TAP Grant, the yellow is the Sylvan Cycle Track, which was approved by MDOT. So the gaps you can see occur just south of Woodward Heights, and then they, those gaps continue to about Sylvan and Oakland Park. And again, from the aerial view, you can see the Seneca Station down there. If you ever, you know, if you've visited Sunny to orient yourself. you know, if you've visited Sunny to orient yourself. And then of course, you have Wessels and Wilk and Regeneration on the left-hand side. That's Woodward Heights. So this gives you an idea of, you know, the gap that you have to bridge. So what's our plan? We'll probably use the alleys as the official bypass. Right now, people ride their bikes on the sidewalk. So probably people will take the path of least resistance and just, you know, where the cycle track ends, jump on the sidewalk for three blocks as they're already doing. And we will certainly intend to come back to this at a later date, ideally when the world doesn't end as a result of all this. So this really highlights this cross-section. This is the Woodward cross-section. And if you kind of, you know, just look at the pedestrian areas, one of the things that's important to keep in mind is that this does provide two-way cycle-track bicycle infrastructure along Woodward. But it also has great benefit for pedestrians and just the environment of walking along Woodward. Because right now, you've got these two little tiny areas kind of perched on the edge, and then this sea of car-dedicated interstate highway-scale infrastructure. So with the cycle track being added here, there's an extra buffer. It basically doubles the amount of buffer that a pedestrian walking on the sidewalk has from Woodward. So the, the sound of cars driving by, it's very stressful with the loud sound going by. You can feel the cars going by. That extra bit of separation is going to make the sidewalks a much nicer place to be. And that's a benefit for everybody. That's a benefit to the businesses. That's a benefit to anyone who wants to have a sidewalk cafe on Woodward. That's a benefit to people just walking on Woodward. It's going to make Woodward a nicer place for people, regardless of, you know, whether people are comfortable using the bike lanes or not. There's going to be benefit for this for other users of the street. What do we do now? So that fifth lane we have, southbound, we know that people turn on Millington and people, excuse me, you know, if you're coming off 696 and you turn onto Woodward, everyone turns at Millington, or if it's between 4 and 7, most people turn at Poplar. And then, you know, there's, we already closed off this lane at Oakland Park. So this fifth lane already ends and tapers down. So our plan is to, south of Poplar Park, use this as the cycle track on southbound Woodward with some kind of physical buffer in between the travel lanes. It's not just going to be paint. I don't know what MDOT will approve there. We'll have to work with that. But, but you know, again, this is about claiming the space. And the eye is towards when Woodward has to be completely reconstructed because it's been decades and decades and decades since Woodward was completely reconstructed. And the idea is to claim the space now, prove that it works, and then when Woodward is reconstructed, it's not a question of if we're going to do a road diet, it's a question of how we rebuild it with all of these elements. And the idea is that design precedent image from the, that we had on the northbound side where we actually are rebuilding everything to implement that kind of vision for the whole corridor. This will be implemented with a lot of plastic bollards and paint. So when people talk about, oh, we need to do a test project, this functionally is a test project. If the world ends and it's a disaster, it could be removed and everything will go back because curbs are not being moved as part of this project. So you know, we have to keep that in mind. And this, the test project is costing us $3 million total to implement. So it's not, doing a, doing a two-mile-long corridor-long test project on Woodward is not something that we can throw some barrels out and, you know, MDOT will allow. It's quite a bit more extensive than that. So this would be the approach. Probably we would like to get this to go down to Oxford, and then you can jump onto the sidewalk or go through the alley at Oxford. So the bottom line, what is the impact from this? MDOT did their own traffic study. They used all of their own assumptions when they were double-checking our work. Woodward will function at an acceptable level of service at all intersections, even with the road diet, both in 2022 and in 2042, using MDOT's background traffic growth rate that they put into their, their study. Level of service is how traffic engineers measure how an intersection functions. The increase in 2042 peak hour corridor travel times, southbound, is 86 seconds. And that's if you're driving all the way from 696 to 8 Mile. Of course, residents of Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale, we typically don't drive the entire corridor, will experience less of a, of a delay. The southbound delay at peak hour in the PM is 23 seconds. Northbound delay is zero in the AM as a result of the road diet and about 35 seconds in the afternoon. There's no, or very marginal increase in travel times through the corridor in off-peak hours. So if you're driving down there at 10:00 AM or 6:00 AM, you probably won't see any difference in your travel time. This is only for your peak hour. You know, one of the things we know is that traffic is not a liquid, it's a gas. I-25 is going to be widened and it's going to be just as congested two years from now. It always happens because traffic expands to fill the space that's available to it. Los Angeles shut down their freeway a couple of years ago and they were predicting Carmageddon, they were calling it. And they found that it didn't happen. Car trips literally just disappeared because people make other arrangements. And with the increase and, you know, telework and working from home and all of the flexibility we have now, people can peak shift, people respond to traffic in different ways. So you know, we don't, we don't expect that to be a big deal. Now, you can do all the traffic studies you want, just a common sense look at, okay, what exists in the world right now that's similar to what we want to do? These are all traffic counts and lane counts for other six-lane divided highways in the region that have similar traffic counts to what we have on Woodward. And what you see is we have the street and then the location that this measurement is from, the average daily trips, the number of lanes that are on that road segment, and then VPL, which is vehicles per lane. So right now, on Woodward, from 8 Mile to up to Oakland Park, it's between 4,000 and 5,000 cars per lane. With the road diet, that goes to 5,300 to 6,600 cars per lane, which is still less than all of these other streets which exist right now. You know, you go Rochester Road between Big Beaver and Waddles, and it's, it's more cars per lane on a similar road cross-section. And you know, it just goes up from there. Grashit, Big Beaver, Telegraph, Mound, all of these roads. And in fact, Woodward right now at 13 Mile carries 7,500 cars per day. So you know, obviously, it can work. It's, I don't know. I don't know what else to say.
The bottom line?
The bottom line. One of the things we have to talk about too is there's a lot of studies that show that when bicycle lanes are put in front of businesses, the businesses benefit. Even if they take on-street parking and convert it to a bicycle lane, businesses see higher sales after it's done. And whether or not that's because people on bikes spend more money than people driving by in car, or whether it's because it's a nicer pedestrian environment and people spend money, not cars, it happens. So you know, one of the things you often hear is that this road diet, because, you know, Woodward's going to be terrible and no one's going to drive there and businesses are going to fail, the, the studies and the data, the evidence does not show that. Some pedestrian benefits, we won't see some of these in Pleasant Ridge. We won't see shorter crossing times, unfortunately. We've already done a little bit of that at Oakland Park by putting that bump out and shortening the distance you have to cross. But again, the better buffer for moving traffic and the more comfortable experience. Bicycle benefits, the interim design is paint and plastic. It's just a first step. Future design will be AAA level. AAA is all ages and abilities bicyclists. Right now, it'll probably be, you know, adventurous bicyclists who use the lane. Probably not a lot of families, but some families. And again, we're doing proof of concept and claiming our turf for the future. So there's, next steps, MDOT has to make a final decision on the road diet. It's made it through the region level. I think it has to go to Lansing for final approval to see the Wizard of Oz. And hopefully that final decision comes down soon. And then TAP, the TAP Committee has to make their decision on grant funding. And then final design and construction will begin in 2022 with Woodward resurfacing by MDOT. And one of the things to keep in mind too, that you'll often hear, is that this is going to increase neighborhood cut-through traffic. But even if you go do the exercise right now and keep in mind that southbound traffic expected to increase by, say, 90 seconds, and go on Google and just find the time, put in a destination that's south of, say, 8 Mile on Woodward somewhere, and then put in your starting point at 1 Millington, and see what the travel time is on Woodward, and then see what the travel time is using an alternate path. Because Woodward is an angled street, there's really no benefit. And in fact, you know, even the alternate routes going over to Ridge and then down to Pinecrest and then down to something to 8 Mile, you know, if you're going to cut through neighborhoods as an alternate path, is far more than 90 seconds that that adds to your travel time doing that. Woodward Heights going to the west, you get down, and where do you go? Do you go down to Ferndale to come back onto Woodward to do a turnaround to keep going south? That probably doesn't work. Do you go down Hilton that ends at 8 Mile, that then you have to go on 8 Mile and do turnarounds? There's really no good, for a north-south street, there's really no, no, no good reason to cut through a neighborhood because of a potential 90-second delay on one direction one hour of the day. And everything else is 30 seconds. It even makes less sense to, for that, why people would, would increase cut-through traffic. So with that, we're not asking you for any, MDOT hasn't requested any resolutions from us. I just wanted to provide an overall project update. I know there's been a lot of discussion on this, particularly in Ferndale. One of the things that a lot of people in Ferndale were saying was, well, you know, because Pleasant Ridge, we were pulling out. And that was not the case. It was just, that was based on the fact that our, MDOT was altering our, our portion of the project. So there's nothing we have to do tonight. I just wanted to provide the updates. We all have the information and common understanding, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has on this.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, first of all, thanks for all the messaging you've been doing and like the communications. The letter you sent to Ferndale was really, it was great. It was artful and very, we appreciate you expressing our support so well. It's great to hear. Thank you for sort of defining that this works as a test. I mean, that's been one of the big questions people have had. It's like, how are we doing this project without testing at first? Because, you know, you know, people's perception is that it will, you know, that those timing numbers aren't accurate, that will be something much more cataclysmic. So thanks for, you know, while the numbers are good, the, thanks for helping define that it's a test kind of thing.
And part, I should also add on that, part of the issue is that Woodward, MDOT is resurfacing Woodward from 8 Mile to Oak Ridge next summer. So part of the, part of the issue is, you know, there is no time to do a test. So, you know, it is an interim measure that, you know.
Is that considered, it'll be construction, reconstruction, or is it just the paving thing?
No, that's just basically a mill and fill.
Okay.
They're not touching any of the concrete curbs. They're just going to refresh the asphalt.
Okay.
Same thing they did through our segment 10 years ago.
So, so when, did you say you feel possibly that they may rebuild Woodward? Don't know.
It's not anytime soon. I mean, we're talking 10, 15 years, maybe.
Yeah. Okay. Because it does seem like a test like this or a project like this, it takes a little time to adjust people's thinking, you know, what's going on on 75, all those things. Because it's hard just to get on 75 right now.
And that's exactly it too. Next summer, when 75 starts to loosen up and that construction ends, you know, right now, our traffic on Woodward is much higher than normal. So we're experiencing a higher traffic level now, but when 75 is constructed, we should go back to our historic traffic patterns. Because we're probably seeing 10,000, 15,000 cars a day more on Woodward now than the historic level has been. So, you know, that's going to help with the congestion adjustment as well. Some of those cars go back to I-25 where they were before, narrowing the lanes. It might not even feel any different than driving on Woodward now.
Yeah. Thank you.
I know this is not in the near future, and I won't be around probably, but thinking back to the Gibbs Study and everything and thinking about getting rid of the ditch when they reconstruct, do you think they might, that that could be part of the, has anybody ever, I mean, other than the rest, all of us saying, get rid of the ditch?
Right.
And making it the grand boulevard that we all know and love?
Right. I don't know. I wouldn't, I wouldn't place a wager on anything.
I'm not holding my breath, thank you.
Don't.
Well, if they're not going to do any major reconstruction, so.
We will, we will always try and advocate and push.
Yes, indeed. I'm sure a lot will, but yeah.
It's interesting, you know, if you, I take all 27 miles of Woodward at least two weeks to have an office in Detroit and on Maun and Pontiac. And as I drive along Woodward, I see lots of different projects that have happened. And certainly, south of 696 feels a lot different than north of 696. And I think a lot of what people are concerned about is that that feeling north of 696 is just heavier traffic until you get past and then to, you know, past Birmingham, and then it lightens up a bit. But as you go south onto 6, you know, south from 696 and down into Detroit, they've already lost some lanes along certain sections for M1 of the rail. And as you get past Campus Marcius, they've even closed a part of Woodward in order to make for a better living environment, essentially for restaurants, eating, collaborating, what have you. So I think it's happening in other parts of Woodward. It makes sense for it to happen here as well. It'd be great for this to continue all the way through the entire 27 miles of Woodward because, you know, there's all of this legislation happening to get us to lower emissions and people be rocking and riding and biking more than driving or with, with less gas. And this is just the start of that. So it looks good to me.
If you plan for cars, you get cars.
Do you get cars?
If you plan for people and bicycles, you get people and bicycles. So if you build an interstate with traffic lights on it, you know, so that really is, and nobody ever justifies the need to build a bridge by the number of people swimming across the river. So the fact that people aren't bicycling on Woodward now, because there's no other bike along Woodward, so.
Beltzep Milcon.
These things, yeah, truly. And these things, they take time, but.
But again, I've always been amazed at the difference between the number of cars south of 696 and the number of cars north of 696. I mean, quite a difference.
Yeah, it's almost double.
Yeah. Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Then we're going to move on to legacy meter read fee.
Okay. This is a fun one. So with the water meter replacement project, there always comes a time in a project like this where the carrot is no longer sufficient. And unfortunately, a stick is necessary. There's two buckets of people who are left that haven't had their meters replaced. One is people who had an issue with their interior shut-off valve or some infrastructure reason. They scheduled the appointment and for whatever reason, that they haven't been followed up on. If, if that's you, then, you know, don't, don't worry. We know. And don't worry that this legacy meter fee is going to be applied to you because, you know, these issues haven't been resolved. We're still working through getting those resolved. Houses have old shut-off valves, but the stop boxes at the street are just as old or older, there is a lot of these. So there's a good chance that we've had some situations where both the shut-off valve and the stop box don't work. So there's a lot to coordinate on these, and we're working on getting that back on the front burner to get those taken care of. The second bucket of people who have just not responded at all, and this is the group of people that we really need to talk to right now. So with the new meters, they're cellular. We read them with a different program. We have a different meter reading process. It's a different processing system to get the bills imported into our system to generate the bills and send those out from the old system, which is a really old system now. And the problem is, is we have a group of people on the old system, we then have to basically do instead of one, two processes, it doubles the amount of work we have to do administratively to read the meters, to generate the bills, to get the bills out. And, you know, people have to let us in to replace our infrastructure, which is the meter. And if you haven't done that, then we are going to be incurring costs now because we have to do basically two parallel processes to read the meters. So we went through and we did an analysis, and it's 15 minutes of time and equipment to physically read the meter and then an hour to process the second billing cycle for the manual read. And based on the equipment and staff times, that comes out to $49.52 each billing cycle. So what we're asking is for the City Commission to approve a legacy meter repeat for anyone who has not responded or has not had their meter changed. This would start October 31st. So the first bill that this would happen on would be the November bill. There will be more notices. Three notices have been sent to every house. So we will be doing a fourth notice now, not from Hydro Court, but from the city. So we are going to be reaching out and making final efforts and letting people know that, okay, this time, you know, it's for real. Some residents tell us, yeah, I'll do it when you, when you're going to shut my water off. Okay. We don't want to do water shut-offs, one, just because of, you know, we're still in a pandemic, and two, with our stop boxes, which will be changed as part of the water infrastructure overhaul over the coming decades. But for now, it's iffy whether every stop box will work or not, and we don't want to break stock, stop boxes unnecessarily costing the city money to then replace those before we're, we need to or have to. So that's where we're going, we would like to go with a legacy meter read fee. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about this. Again, we will be sending notices out to both buckets of people, different letters and different notices. Thank you. Let's get this back on track with the people who had the, who responded but had issues. And then the, hey, come on, get on the ball to anyone who hasn't responded.
It's a monthly fee, correct?
It would be per billing, per billing cycle.
Oh, right.
Oh, right. I understand. Yep.
So, yeah.
Yep.
Can you speak to how large of a group it is that we're?
We have, yeah, we have about 100 people who responded and had issues that we need to double back and follow up with. And that's about 150 houses that just have ghosted us.
Okay. New number. Who's this?
Pardon?
New number.
Yeah.
Who is this?
Exactly. Yeah. New phone. Who does?
I do think having the Pleasant Ridge seal on something will get the attention because I know there were questions early on, who's HydroCorp? Is this a scam? And then what? I think we dispelled most of that, but at the same time, there could be some of that.
Right.
Mystery out there. And I think the Pleasant Ridge official will hopefully solve some of that.
Hopefully that will get past some of the skeptics. Yeah. We knew this was coming. We knew that it always happens in these kinds of projects, so.
Do you, I guess, yeah, what, what will the final end be so you can get to 100%? Do you have any idea? Hopefully this will get you there.
Hopefully.
Okay, great.
I mean, ultimately, if we get down to where it is, you know, 15 or 20 houses, that's when we do water shut offs.
Okay.
We're stoning.
And we, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to do 150 water shut offs. 10 or 15?
We don't want to do any.
We don't want to do any. Right, exactly. We just want to spend 10 minutes in your basement putting new meters.
Yeah.
No, and thank you. We, there were a bunch of, there was some discussion today on Facebook, people who are concerned, who are in the first category of the ones who have been trying to get it in their, you know, infrastructure issues with their house. And so it's good to hear that that's not, those folks aren't going to be included in the fee.
Right. And, and we do know, if you are in that group of people, we do know that HydroCorp has had, you know, we will admit that HydroCorp has had a little bit of mixed messaging. Because we've had different people who are on the phone.
Yeah.
When you call that they talk to. We had four installers. So there's six or eight people from HydroCorp's side who are all interacting with residents. And so there have been some, some different direction given to residents on some things.
Has there been any outreach from HydroCorp? Has there been any outreach to the people who haven't?
Who have?
Who haven't gotten on board with this? Have they tried calling them at all?
Well, we've, we've had three notices that have been mailed to everybody.
I know. I was just wondering if they've tried a different, like?
Well, we don't have phone numbers. That's a problem. I mean, we, we don't have phone numbers for every house. So we have to, this has to happen through the mail. And then once there's contact made, then we have contact information. So, you know, I guess if somebody missed all of the notices, they may not have known about this.
I'm just thinking of the different modalities since this, for these people because it's not working.
Right. So the HydroCorp is starting to do door hangers in addition to mail. So, you know, we're certainly making every effort, but mail, mail delivery is really the necessary kind of first contact method.
And then if you are someone who is having issues with, you know, some of the, you know, some of the different complications with this, just should they be reaching out to you guys at City Hall?
It depends. It really depends on what the issue is.
Okay.
So, yeah, you can start with us.
Okay.
You can also call HydroCorp. It's, it's a hard question.
Depends on the issue.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Would anyone mind just rounding this to $50? It just feels, it feels so like we're trying to be precise out of.
Don't do that. Because of bolt.
Oh.
And there has to be.
It has to be exactly.
An exact basis for this fee.
Got it.
What are you doing that extra 48 cents?
I know.
So this is the, this is the number that we can, we've justified.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions before I ask for a motion?
No.
Okay, no. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that a $49.52 bill legacy meter fee be assessed on the utility bill for the properties who have not replaced their water meter and transponder effective October 31st, 2021, and continue to be billed until the water meter and transponder have been replaced.
Is there support?
Support.
Any other questions? Okay. May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the Woodward Heights Boulevard resident petition regarding traffic calming.
Yes.
Jim?
So we received a petition that was signed by 18 residents on Woodward Heights representing 16 of the 65 houses on the street. So it's about a quarter of the homes on Woodward Heights. And the request is to test closing the street at the east city boundary and just to the east of the Woodward alley. We do have a traffic calming program and manual that allows residents to request changes to their street on a petition basis. However, closing a street is not traffic calming. That's a systemic change and it's not something that's in the traffic calming manual. So this is not really something that the city has been on record saying that we would consider, that we would do, closing streets. But we have a petition from the residents and so staff, we are forwarding it to the commission for direction and next steps. By way of background, there's, you know, some, some background information in the packet. Closing streets again is not traffic calming. It's, it's moving traffic. It's benefiting one street to the potential detriment of other streets. It's a network change. The city has, did close Fairwood to construct the court parking lot. You know, whether you agree or disagree with that decision is a, is a separate thing, but that was done. Other than that, ridge was closed when 696 was constructed and that was part of that whole, that whole process. But other than that, there, there have not been major changes to traffic patterns in the city. I should say ridge, also Maplefield and Indiana.
Yeah.
Where it used to connect to 10 Mile as well. One of the likely, you know, outcomes of this is the traffic would move from Woodward Heights to other streets in the city. You can use Gainesboro to get to Sylvan or Fairwood to continue through the city that way. So we have to be cognizant of the fact that this request would likely benefit one set of residents at the expense of another set of residents. And that residents have made investment decisions on where they buy their houses based on conditions that exist today. We know that Woodward Heights has been a half mile road for time out of mind, as long as it's really been in existence. You can take it all the way to Mount in Warren. It's built wider. It's 37, it's 30 feet wide rather than 27 feet wide because it's always carried more traffic. There's comments in city commission minute summaries from 1946 about traffic issues on Woodward Heights. So it is, it is a half mile road. We know that houses on Woodward Heights are by themselves, no different than houses on any other street on the east side, but they sell for 10 to 15% less on a square footage basis. This is consistent looking at assessors' sales records over the last five years. It's consistent 10 to 15% discount that you get for your house on Woodward Heights because the impacts of living on a half mile road are priced in by the market. So, you know, this is something that we have to consider. Residents on Sylvan or Fairwood may not enjoy having all the extra traffic because we decided that we were going to close one street and push traffic to streets where it doesn't currently exist. There are some cost impacts to the project. There's a short term.
The short term cost to run the test. And then there's the cost to potentially permanently close the street. And then the long-term ongoing loss in revenue due to declassifying Woodward Heights as a major street. Under street funding from the state of Michigan, Act 51 is what sets how we get money from the state to maintain our streets. And so some streets are local streets, some streets are major streets, and then, you know, you go on to collect arterials from there. And Pleasant Ridge, we only have local and major streets. And major streets are funded differently.
Did you say major streets and what was the?
Local.
Local and major. Okay.
Yes. So each mile of major street for fiscal year '22 receives $18,777 from the state. That's what we get for our allocation for Act 51 funding. While a mile of local street receives $4,486. So that's a difference of $14,291. Woodward Heights is .3, a third of a mile, basically. So we'd lose at least $4,830 every year if we declassified it. So again, it's a small overall number, but that would be a, a permanent loss of revenue to the city for this. And then, you know, the, the cost to permanently implement these changes would probably be $35,000 or more if we were going to implement the, the barriers. Again, not an insurmountable cost, but just to be aware of. And then the temporary cost to test the closure would probably be between $3,500 and $7,000 if we're using the temporary materials to test the closure. We know that we hear about the traffic on Woodward Heights. We know that when we did the test projects last summer and took the stop sign out at Bermuda, it reduces the impact of trucks. Because the, the, one of the biggest impacts of a truck is when it's stopping and starting, the brake noise, the engine noises, it gets back up to speed. That creates more exhaust, more noise, more vibrations. That's one of the major impacts of trucks. And when you took the, when we took the stop sign out of Bermuda, when trucks just moved through at speed, it's less impactful. So one of the alternative approaches that we could do would be to move, and this is something that we discussed in the past, due to the meeting we had last year reviewing the Woodward Heights, the residents very much wanted that stop sign back at where it always was. But we could move the stop sign from Bermuda North to Bermuda South where the Heights Market is. When we had the transportation engineer do a traffic stop sign warrant study, it's absolutely not warranted at our Bermuda. There's only 80 cars a day that come south on Bermuda to turn at that intersection. And one of the reasons for a stop sign is intersection control, not traffic calming or, or anything else. And when drivers on Woodward Heights come to a stop sign and they literally never see a car at Bermuda coming south to turn, you know, you think as a driver, this is stupid. And you just start to get aggravated or people will blow through that stop sign. The Bermuda intersection is much closer in traffic volumes. There's 1,000 cars a day at least that come northbound on Bermuda. So a stop sign at that intersection makes a lot more sense. You actually see cars coming north at Bermuda. And it would minimize the impact of the stop-start issue for all vehicles, but particularly trucks, because there's a lot fewer houses at that location. Once you get east of Bermuda, there's no houses. So it would reduce the overall impact on, on the residential area. That's an alternative that we could do. We have the traffic assessment that supports that. Ferndale has already passed a traffic control order. So all we would have to do would be to pass our own traffic control order. They'll move that stop sign over there. That could be done. So should the city commission wish to take up the request, my recommendation is that we first conduct a survey from residents. This is again, a systemic network level change that will impact all residents, particularly on the east side. So I think all residents should have an opportunity to weigh on, weigh in on this before we really do anything, test it, do anything. So the, the survey would be distributed via mail. This wouldn't be one where we just do it online. We'd want to make sure that every house has the opportunity and notice to see this. Ask questions about, you know, should we do nothing? Should we test closing Woodward Heights for the petition? Should we try closing all streets at the Ferndale border? If it's good for Woodward Heights, why isn't it, is it also good for, for Fairwood and Sylvan that we close all of them at the Ferndale border to stop all cut through traffic through Pleasant Ridge? We'd analyze responses. We could certainly cross tab those by street to see how the residents on each street feel to, to get a sense for where everyone falls. And then we bring that back to the commission to review the results. And then we'd make the decision on whether or not to proceed with testing all, some, more of these projects. We could then conduct the tests. That'd probably be next spring or summer, assess the results, and then come back and come for the final decision for the commission. So if you did want to proceed with this, I would suggest that a survey would be how I would suggest we proceed as a first step. And then again, let me just real quick. So the petition request would be to close Woodward Heights for the eastbound side at the alley. There's some design challenges. You see that driveway that basically intersects with the alley. So I don't know where you close the street and allow that person to get in and out of their driveway. It may be that the closure happens to the east of that driveway and then that, that person can't drive down Woodward Heights. They'd have to use the alley to get somewhere. You know, it gets challenging. We can't really close Woodward Heights to the west of the alley because people have to be able to get in and out of the alley. I mean, it's just, you know, you need to be able to do that. And if you close it to the west of the alley, then people can cut through Woodward Heights and then go cut through the alley to get wherever they want to go. So that's a challenge. I don't know exactly how that works yet, but that was the request. And then the, the white dashed line here is the boundary between Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale. So it runs down the middle of Bermuda South. We would, again, we've got driveways. So we'd probably have to, that last house in Pleasant Ridge would probably not be able to, we'd probably have to close the street to the west of that house. So that person would not be able to drive down Woodward Heights if we, if we, that person wouldn't be able to get anywhere in Pleasant Ridge if we closed all the streets at the border. So again, I don't know how that works. It's a, that's a fundamental challenge that I'm not sure what we would do with. We may have to do a curved closure or something to provide them space to get in and out of their driveway. So part of the challenge there is Ferndale would have to allow us to place our road closure in Ferndale. I don't know how that's going to play with Ferndale. So that's, that is a specific challenge. If we were to test closing Fairwood and Sylvan, you can see that that kind of happens in the middle of the street. There's no reason we could, we couldn't close Ferndale, Fairwood and Sylvan in the middle of the street. We could also talk to Ferndale about if we were going to do this to close Gainesboro. Close Gainesboro maybe here.
Yeah.
Cause then, you know, you could circulate. You'd have some Ferndale residents who would be kind of trapped in Pleasant Ridge at that point. I don't know if they'd be sad about that, but I think it's pretty much.
They would ask for a pool access.
Yeah, they would ask for a pool access. But that might be a better way of accomplishing the closure. But again, Ferndale would have to be on board with that. So, you know, there are, there are some, this isn't to try to, you know, not do the idea. It's just there's some practical challenges with, with this. So if we had to close in the middle of a street, this is an example of how that's been accomplished. You, you know, you can do this to allow emergency vehicles to get through, but I'm also certain that regular cars would just drive through the middle of this too.
Of course they would.
So this is another way. This is, this is in Ferndale. There's three streets in between Bermuda and Martin Road Park in Ferndale. That's the 696 service drive to the north. So this was done to close those streets off. This is probably more like what would have to be done to close the streets. And I also don't doubt that people would drive over those rocks and those curbs to get down the street as well. But it would stop, you know, the majority of traffic from coming through.
Or if the garbage cans aren't there, they would just go.
Exactly. Yep. We would probably, yeah, you can't really do this by a driveway. That's a natural bypass.
It's why the rock is there.
Yeah. Yeah. So those, that, that's probably how this would look if it was done on a permanent basis.
Just put more rocks all the way.
So with that, staff is looking for your guidance and direction on this.
Comments from the commission?
We'd like to hear from people or?
Yeah, we will. Yeah. I thought we'd, if there was anything here first.
Did I address anything?
There's any, any comments from the floor, please?
I have comments. Again, I'm Howard from 60 Woodward Heights. And when I moved into my house, I wasn't aware that Woodward Heights was as crazy as it is traffic wise. And over the years, it's just got worse and worse and worse. And my concern isn't so much the cars. Most, I'd say 80% of the cars drive through there decent. You get the rogue car that, there's a black Mustang or, I don't remember what it was, with dark tinted windows that squeals its tires, turning the corner off of Bermuda by the market and goes down our street, wide open throttle, blows through our stop sign. I've seen it two or three times now. And the trucks, they're just, they're just rattling my nerves, the smell, the noise. What does it do to our street? We're going to have to pay for that street in the future that the trucks destroy from their weight. You know, and, and, you know, you talk $4,000 in revenue that the city is going to lack. Whoop-de-doo. If it makes our neighborhood a safer, better neighborhood to live in. And if you can, I don't know, James, can you put that photo of the west side of Woodward Heights back up on the, on the screen? Can you put some of those photos? So on this photo, you could put, and I'll walk over here. You could put a barrier here so cars can't come in here. You can put a no rate turn for trucks there too. That should be done now. But leave it so the cars can get out on each end of the street.
Do you remember when Woodward Heights was under construction and we had barriers there?
Yeah.
At Indiana?
Uh huh.
At Bermuda?
Yep.
And at the end?
I do remember that.
And you remember when people were driving on your lawn to get around them?
Nobody drove over my lawn. They drove over my lawn when the street flooded.
Okay.
From a rain.
Different time.
And they drove up over my neighbor's, over his driveway and down the sidewalks to avoid the flooded street. They do that. That's happened numerous times. But yeah, you're going to get the cars that go around it. There's no question about it. But. But, the trucks aren't going to be able to get around it. And that's the issue, is the trucks. I mean, I have no problem, I really don't object to the traffic. That it's the trucks. And I get my best results from you, James, when I email you and tell you about the trucks. You call the companies, GFL, you call them, their trucks disappeared. We get an occasional one through there now. DTE with all our trucks, they cut through all the time. So does Con, or Consumers Power. They're not working on our street, they're just cutting through. Maybe they could take the truck route to alleviate some of the traffic, truck traffic on our street. Smart buses have been going down our street right, left, and center. There's no bus stops on our street. They're just cutting through. Why? You know, I want to know why these buses are coming through our neighborhood. There's no reason for it. So if we can get rid of the trucks, I'm okay with just moving the stop sign from our Bermuda down to the other one. I think that'd be a great idea. When you come up Bermuda from Ferndale and want to turn left down to Woodward Heights, if there's cars parked in that lane, you can't see incoming traffic. You've got to pull out into the crosswalk, and almost into the lane a little bit, to see the cars coming down Woodward Heights that are going east. And it's a dangerous intersection. I'm surprised there hasn't been more accidents there. And, you know, and the stop sign, yeah, I have seen you out there patrolling the stop signs, and that's helped. I'd say 80% of the cars stopped there now. The problem with the cars is the speed between the signs, but it's maybe 20% of the cars. You know, it's 2 out of 10. So, overall, what we need to address on Woodward Heights is the trucks. That's my concern with our street is, you know, the pounding on the pavement, wrecking our road, causing foundation issues. It's going to shift soil. You hammer the ground enough, it moves things a ways away. When you can feel it in your house, it's because it's moving the dirt around your house. You know, and the smell, it's just, I like to have my windows open when it's nice.
Howard, just, just for a question. We're responding to a petition.
Okay.
That was signed by 16 households, 18 people.
And I've talked to-
And you're one person here, and the petition said, "Close off both ends."
Right.
Didn't say anything about trucks, it didn't say anything about any. So we need more informa, I mean-
Okay, well, I talked to some of the neighbors-
Do you represent everybody, or would we get different responses from each person?
You'll probably get different responses from different people. And I've talked to a number of the neighbors. And several of them expressed concerns about emergency vehicles being able to access the street if it's closed off. I understand that concern. So, and I'm not a big advocate of cutting the street off. I kind of like, I don't mind seeing the cars go by, it doesn't really bother me. So, my, what I want to see is the stop signs moved, and then maybe test it, test closing the street. But yeah, sure, you're going to have cars still cutting through, there's no getting around that. It's just going to happen, you were talking earlier about the, you know, Woodward, you know, putting the bike lanes in and stuff there, and James was talking about 90 seconds less time to take Woodward than the neighborhood streets. People don't think like that. If they're stopped, they think it's wasting their time. If they're moving, they feel like they're making time. So they'll take the neighborhood streets, even though it'll take them an extra minute. They feel like they're getting there quicker because their car's in motion. That's why people are. That's why they take those streets, thinking it's quicker when it's really not. Nobody times what it takes them to take one route or another. They just go, so. But, I would like to see the test done. Whether it's permanently closed or not, that remains to be seen by who wants what that live on Woodward Heights. I think, really, truly, it's what the residents want. But a test would be nice, but I think moving the stop sign would help more than anything, and regular patrols on the street. I mean, yeah, Chief Noax says it's the most patrolled street in the, in the community. But, I don't see the cars there. On the Day of the Dream Cruise, I was out in front all day with friends from Ohio. I never saw a Pleasant Ridge cruiser once the whole day.
But you said there were cruiser, the other police-
The state police, county sheriff, Ferndale pla, I see Ferndale police all the time.
Because they were all working together, I think, so-
Right, right, yeah. And they kept things calm. It worked. It really did. I was happy. I was totally happy. But, we need consistent, regular patrolling. And it's, I live on Woodward Heights, I sit on my porch all the time, and then when I get in my car and go out, I always see our police cars out on Woodward patrolling all the time. Why don't I see them on my street where I live? You know? That's, I don't think that's a difficult question to ask. I just, I'd just like to see something done. Doing nothing is getting, the trucks and traffic has just been getting heavier and heavier and heavier, and worse and worse and worse. Something's got to be done. And I'd like to see something done. If we can get rid of the trucks, that'll help a lot. And once nine miles reopened, and John R. Bridge is finished, or 11 Mile Bridge is finished, that'll help, too.
Right.
But, something needs to be done over the trucks are an issue. They, they really, really are an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think they called for some kind of survey.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, now it's becoming a much more-
So, do you think it's a survey, or do you think it is a different? You know, we have this traffic calming guide. And, I mean, I think there are some steps we might be able to take. You know, what I would, I mean, and it's just me, is, you know, what if we do some stuff like, uh, it, you know, I mean, actually, Commissioner Wall really suggested this. You know, we were talking everything from parking on both sides of the street, to chicanes and things like that. I mean, as we've seen on Woodward Heights east of, into Ferndale, is they put, I mean, they did significant things to obstruct the driving. You know, they make it so that drivers are like, wow, what is happening? Everybody complains about it, but that's sort of the point, is it creates, you know, sort of, it's disrupting, like, the traffic.
That's what a chicane is supposed to do, right? Slow people down, make it tougher.
Right.
I agree with you as far as, it's not in the traffic calming manual. Closing a street, as you said, Jim, is not a traffic calming measure. It's a completely different situation. Have we put our best effort, you know, we talked about, like, we said about, like I suggested, parking on both sides of the streets, we're talking about moving a stop sign. Can we try these things before we go to the, go to closing a street?
And, you know, could we maybe talk to Ferndale? And talk to them about putting signage and like, no left, like, so that truck traffic coming out, that industrial park that has been there for 56, have, yeah?
We have.
Okay.
There is new, there is new, there is new signs that say, "No left turn for trucks."
Okay.
They've, Ferndale's revised their signs heading westbound on Woodward Heights.
Right.
Have they?
They have.
Okay, good.
They helped.
Good. So yeah, Ferndale, we did, we did talk to Ferndale about that, and they did do that.
And then sort of the same thing, like, only like, the left turn coming out of the third Bermuda, that they have to turn left, that they have to head east as well. But then the other thing is, what if we do get, I, you know, I don't know if this is possible, I don't know what sign rules are, but what if we do, do a couple much larger signs on, one on Woodward, and a couple on, you know, and like, we're intensifying then our no truck sign on Woodward Heights, but actually, it's sort of Ferndale.
We have, there's five no truck signs on westbound Woodward, big ones. We put a bigger one. We flipped the speed limit sign and the no truck sign.
Okay.
So the speed limit sign, so the no truck sign is right at the, we've done all that, basically.
And it has a no turn, trucks no right turn, kind of thing? Could we do that?
No, uh-
Like, no right turn for trucks?
No right turn for trucks?
Off of Woodward, I'm sorry, yeah.
That requires an M-dot permit.
It does, okay.
And also, there is no traffic control order for westbound, for eastbound trucks on Woodward Heights. 75% of trucks on Woodward Heights, from the data we know, are going west to Woodward.
Oh, okay.
So the traffic control order that we have is only for westbound, for westbound trucks.
Yeah.
So we'd have to do a traffic control, which isn't a big deal, it's just a procedural step. We'd put up a no truck sign at the alley, heading eastbound on Woodward, or on Woodward Heights. But, in order to just put a sign up on Woodward, it requires an M-dot permit, it requires M-dot review, it requires M-dot installation, so-
Can I ask a question?
You know, we could, we could probably get one up nine months from now if we started the process now.
If we did it, would it, okay, so, and I don't know, this is why I'm asking, if we did it, would it, if it was no truck, and it was, does it come up as a no truck route then, if somebody was looking, looking and, you know what I'm saying?
No, no. And you can't, you know, with Waze and Google and all of their other various ones, they're horrible, and you can't, you know, it's, this is an issue everywhere.
Okay.
Of, you know, getting it recognized. We've tried, I've tried to tell them that Gainsborough is no longer a street, for years, everywhere. I've reported it to the federal government, I've reported it to the database here, I've reported it everywhere. It still pops up as a street on everything.
Okay.
So-
Okay.
That is frustrating.
So-
If anyone knows how to make that happen, let me know.
I have tried.
I'm glad I'm not the only one who failed with that.
I know who'd call, and it's still, a call every six months.
Yeah.
So, I think, like, with some of those types of things, you know, having, working collaboratively with Ferndale, and, you know, seeing if we can get M-dot to do that work, that sign thing, that would be great. But what if we do that in, you know, combined with adding some chicane-type thing or things? So, this is, and this is where it will come to Woodward Heights residents, is, you know, things were vocally not approved, like, very strongly not approved by the residents.
Yeah.
And this is one of the things, is, it, it's got to disrupt traffic. So it's going to disrupt, it's not going to be, you know, it may cause some, a little bit of hardship with, you know, it's harder to back out of your driveway, you know, or something like that, to make, to add a chicane, because, you know, there are so many driveways and things like that, you know? But to add some things that cause points of conflict, you know, cars on both, parked on both sides of the street. And, I mean, that's the stuff that will make a difference to the traffic.
So, if I may, I think there's a difference between closing the road and managing the trucks, and getting more information. And we're having a conversation about closing the road before we even know what three-quarters of the people on Woodward Heights feel, because the petition only got one quarter of the people. So, I'm concerned that we're jumping ahead even before we know how the people of Woodward Heights actually feel. I know there's very passionate feelings from several people on Woodward Heights. I don't know how every house on Woodward Heights feels, and I don't think we've given them the opportunity to describe how they feel to what has been proposed. Now, when we met in July, we had suggested that they should do the petition. I'm happy that they did it. Unfortunately, in my view, there aren't enough people to, for me to have an opinion how Woodward Heights feels. So, I think we have this question, do we do a survey or not do a survey to get more opinions? To get the opinions of all of the people in Pleasant Ridge, so that we have all the information we need? Or, if we feel strongly enough about it that a survey would not change our opinion on what we should do next? That, to me, is the question. And, and that tells me what we should do next. I am personally in favor of doing the survey, because it'd be better to just have all the information. Unfortunately, I don't know that it would convince everyone, even if the survey resoundingly said, "Don't close the road," that it would stop the request from coming. But at least we have all the information we need to make a sound decision on what to do next. It might even tell us not to run a test, because the resounding feedback is, "Don't do it, we're unhappy, we need it." And the two houses that are most impacted are upset, and maybe their neighbors are upset by that. I don't know. So that, that would be my suggestion, is that we do a survey that describes the benefits and the downsides to performing this, what has been requested, so that everybody has a round picture, get the results back, meet again in January, and decide if we're running a test or not.
Yeah, and I would hope that this would give it, this would give an opportunity to everybody on Woodward Heights to actually answer the question.
What about other people, though? That's, can I tell you what I thought? Like, I thought, like, when you were standing there saying, "It's not just going to affect Woodward Heights people, it's going to affect other people on other streets."
Absolutely.
The survey-
If that's what we want, we're going to spread for everybody.
Send it to all, everyone in the city gets a letter.
Because I want, I want to be able to fill out a survey on St. Louis.
But it's, are we, would we seriously consider shutting down Woodward Heights? I mean, this changes the, it changes the safety level of the east side of the city. It changes the, I mean, it's like, all the things that Jim said, that I can't recount, but it is not part of our traffic calming manual, that, you know, we worked hard, we voted on, we approved, there were public hearings on that. And that, those are methods that are proven scientifically to work, to help with traffic issues. And, that would also work with truck issues, because you're creating a situation with, with friction and, you know, that will make the routes not, you know, I think it's answering the question.
So-
And I think a survey for something that is not, that is detrimental to the city, does not, to me, seem like a productive or cost-effective way to sort of-
So, I guess the way I'd look at it is, I'll say it this way, whether it's a survey or something, there is one household out of, how many here tonight? I don't know how many are watching. Two. Oh, I'm sorry, I know this. Sorry. So, I, we don't have enough information, and we're not even, we haven't communicated to everyone on Woodward Heights that the petition is there, and that we're responding to something. I would feel better knowing that that communication happened, that everyone is aware of what's being discussed, so that whatever we, this decision we make, even if it's to do nothing, at least is well-communicated. And the survey seems a way to, to get that communication, to get a lot of feedback. I may be the only one.
I'm with you. I'm with you. No, no, I agree.
I would, I would, I would suggest that you also consider, we could move the stop sign. And it's something that, you know, it, moving the stop sign to the other Bermuda is supported by traffic engineering study. It will reduce the impact of trucks. It won't stop any trucks who are using the street, but it'll reduce the impact of them on, on residents. I don't think it's a coincidence that the, the most complaints and the loudest residents who are complaining, who complain about the truck traffic, all live within a radius of that stop sign. I don't think that's a, I don't think that's a coincidence. So, I would ask, proceeded the survey, that's totally your call, you know, what we do next. But, I would also ask that, you know, we could, you could pass an order tonight to move the stop sign. We can close Bermuda southbound, too. We talk about chicanes and bumpouts and everything, you know, we know that 80 cars a day come down Bermuda to turn on-
Northbound?
No, no, southbound.
Southbound.
Where the stop sign is now.
Oh, just close that sign.
We could just close, we could just close that intersection.
So it's only northbound going, okay.
Yeah, so, so-
Is this for all? Okay, go on.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could, we could close that, and we could create a little bit of a bump out there to narrow the street. We can do things. That doesn't, that does or doesn't have to, you know, that's something we could do. And then, also, if you want the sign on Woodward and the traffic control order for the eastbound trucks, we'd have to write that up.
That's how I feel. I guess I would want to try, try, I guess before we go down this, in my opinion, before we go down this road of surveying people, in presenting this, to me, if you ask the this, to me, if you ask the question, you're, you're presenting it as an option. That's how I feel about this. If we could potentially solve this with some of our other issues and, and then see how it goes and then evaluate it.
So, what you could do is you could, if you wanted to, we could put a delay on when we issue the survey. You could vote to do the survey.
Okay.
But, that we would first move the stop sign and pass the traffic control order and then wait a couple of months and then issue the survey after traffic, you know, after the, after the, you know, the result of those changes becomes apparent and then get input. You could do that.
Can we, this is, this is a matter, this whole discussion of trying different things, what was the discussion that got that stop sign moved back? That was Woodward Heights residents asking to have that moved back to Bermuda, right?
Yes. But, you know, you, you heard about, you know, the, the comments we heard where it's unsafe to cross the street, you know, all, all of those, all of those comments.
Speeding through and they're doing.
Right. But, you know, so, so.
I'm just saying, we, we've tried it, we've moved once.
In, in the issue of, right, and, and why that stop sign was put back at that Bermuda and instead of like moving it to the stop on Bermuda, because I think there was this fatigue at the meeting last year and, and, you know, bringing, the idea of moving the stop sign at that meeting was probably just, you know, we're people, right? So.
Well, we didn't because there was an overwhelming.
Right.
Of the people who showed up at that meeting, right?
That were on Zoom.
And, and I'm confident going out on a limb and saying that moving the stop sign is the right thing to do because, because.
Will it move the problem?
What, pardon?
Will it move the problem?
Yeah. But, the, there's, there's, if, there's fewer trees to hear the problem over there. Because it's, it's.
As you go, as you go east, there are few, there are no houses.
Right. So, there's fewer houses. There's, you know, much less, yeah. And it's a safer and more correct intersection for the stop sign to be because.
It seems like a stop sign should be there.
Right. Because there's traffic on Bermuda coming north.
Yes.
And, you know, the, the idea of, "I can't cross the street anymore." Well, if you're a pedestrian and you're, and you live on the south side of Woodward Heights and you want to cross the street to go somewhere, you still have a stop sign. It's further down the street at Bermuda, but if you're going to Gainesboro Park, you can go down and there's a, a stop sign crossing and then you can go up Bermuda to Gainesboro Park. You know, if you're going to Indiana to go to the north, so, yes, it might be a little bit less of a convenient walking route to have a pedestrian stop crossing, but there's still, we're not losing a stop sign crossing for pedestrians. It's just in a different location. So, I think on the whole, it's the right thing to do to move that stop sign. And I would, I would suggest that we do that as part of any package of, of improvements.
Then, then what I would suggest is, we, yeah, move the stop sign, do the traffic order and wait on the survey until we know we want to serve, because ultimately, we want to get the response from those actions in addition to something else.
That makes sense. That makes sense to me.
And then, and then we can come back and see what we do about a test or whatever, if that makes sense.
I think that's good.
Mayor, if I, if I could, Howard, I just wanted to say, I, I appreciate you coming and showing up, as you do. I can appreciate your perspective and, and no, it takes a lot to, to fight for what, what you're trying to do. So, I really do appreciate it. And there's a few things that I'm, as I'm listening, that I'm kind of picking up on. And truly, if there were a really good solution, it would be done. I'm confident in, in the city's ability to do that and in, in Jim and his team. So, I, 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 I just want you to know that we are all listening, truly, and, and we want, and for those at home listening, we, we really do want to figure this out. But there are some things that need to get sussed out first. And, and the stop sign thing, I, I completely agree. I think that, that makes sense. We've proven that. That's an easy fix. And I agree with Brett's original. We, we just need more data so we can have a better, a better understanding of where we're going with this because I am ambivalent. I, if we close it, which, maybe that will come to a point. I, I don't know. I'm not completely opposed to it. That said, I think there are a lot of steps before we, we even get there. And I think of all the other residents in Pleasant Ridge that that, that would affect, as Ann was saying, for emergency vehicles, just people that, that go to the businesses on the other side of where that would be. So, you know, Drifter and Urban Rest, one of my favorites, plug for them. Yeah, it's just, it's tough and I'm, I'm truly ambivalent. So, we are listening and I appreciate the good faith effort on, on the petition. I, I know it's not a ton, but that, that was a, it's a good faith effort in my, in my opinion. So, at this point, I, I think we need more data and, and I'm, I'm with, with you, Commissioner Scott.
Yeah. And if I may add, yeah, definitely it was great to see the effort to get the petition done because I think it was necessary to sort of get things moving. I am personally not in favor of closing the road because I could see all of the negative things that are not obvious to see when you just want the trucks to stop, you know? So, I understand that the noise is an issue and everything, but I'm thinking about garbage trucks backing down the street to get to Indiana, to get off the street, or turning around in driveways, or someone wanting a sofa delivered.
Or every Amazon truck.
Yes, a sofa delivered. And there's no way to get the, you know, it's not easy to get the truck. Or, the fire truck is gonna take an extra minute. Or, the two poor houses at the end are now maybe not even getting trash service. You know, it's just, I, I see all of these things that are not good about closing the road.
Right.
And, but at the same time, I would like more information to be certain what I'm thinking is the right thing. So, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. But definitely moving the stop sign is a good start. The traffic order is a good start. Although, I'm not sure how effective it'll be. People kind of are doing what they want to do right now, but it's a good faith effort.
It's 2021.
And that's true. It's 21.
Well, and I think the other thing that, you know, we've talked about, you know, I know we've all talked about that it is a, it's a bad summer for traffic, you know, on, you know, I-75 is still a mess and it's really hard to get onto it. And then it's hard to get off of it and hard to use it. It's, you also have that third Bermuda which has been under construction and a lot of trucks have been coming in and out through that, which has not helped the matters at all. You know, their own construction trucks as well as other trucks can't take the third Bermuda as a truck route. And then, right now with the nine mile situation. And then, yeah, you have, with 75, you have 35 other issues that have compiled with that. So, hopefully.
We're not dismissing what you're feeling, as you said in July.
No, no, if I can just, just say something quicker. No, I, I totally agree with you, Brett, and I like your idea. I think moving the stop sign, and I, I didn't take the petition for closing the street. That was one of the other neighbors, Tom Henderson, that did that. I'm, I'm about, yeah, move the stop sign down. Maybe at the crosswalk there, put one of those little signs that stop for pedestrians on the crosswalk there at Bermuda. Don't close Bermuda because I use it. I go out on my driveway over to Sullivan because I don't like driving on my street. I've been passed a couple of times. I've had cars come flying up on my bumper and flip me off and blow their horn at me. I don't like driving on my own street, so don't block Bermuda. I liked using it to get over to Sullivan. I go by your house all the time.
I know, I see you all the time.
Thank you.
Can I add something too? Sorry, I'm really attending. I was watching on the video.
Name it. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Alex Friedman, 50 Woodward Heights. And, yeah, I mean, I know we had that argument and disagreement the last time we talked about Woodward Heights and getting the stop sign to stay there. And I think it's unreasonable to just make a quick, jump to conclusions again in moving this stop sign. Sorry, I just biked over here. And, I think it's, it's moving a little too fast. If you were just gonna say, "Let's move the stop sign from Bermuda to the next Bermuda," I would say, "Let's just add another stop sign. Let's just leave the stop sign there and then add a third one." Because you know how adamant those peoples, people are by the stop sign. That's why we originally got it back because people were very unhappy about taking it away. And that's not gonna change. You, as your dat, your study found out that 60% of people wanted the stop sign to stay, correct? The last time we did it? Okay, so.
It's literally one dip boat different, as I recall.
Yeah. But either way, I think if we're just gonna say, "Let's just move the stop sign just to try it," I think that's, that's not gonna solve it. I don't, I don't know what's gonna solve it.
Well, testing, though. The, testing moving the stop sign.
Well, okay, let's, let's test moving it, but let's test adding another one. Let's see how many less cars come through if there's a stop sign on Bermuda, Bermuda, and then all the way right before Woodward.
Um, I, I, I just, I have to interject here because, you know, these, these are, these are sort of like common sense things, but there is, there is decades of research around stop signs and how they work and, and psychology of drivers and how they react to them. And when you have multiple unnecessary stop signs in a row, it increases the anger of people driving away from the stop sign. People, because people think, then they start to feel that you're wasting their time. So, compliance at the stop sign drops and you start to get people who, who gun it away from unnecessary stop signs more.
Okay, but let's test it.
Uh, well, we have, we've had a traffic engineer study this. And, and the.
And they determined that it wasn't safe. That's the reason why the stop sign is there.
No.
Because it wasn't safe to cross the street.
That, that's, that's not true. There was never a traffic engineer that studied having a stop sign at where it's located right now.
But didn't you say when your kid was walking across the street?
Can I finish?
Without the stop sign, that some cars stopped once in a while for them? It wasn't a thing about, you know, like, if they're running the stop sign. It was about a safety thing and the dangers that not having that stop, stop sign there presents.
So, the stop sign is unwarranted at its current location. It does not meet the requirements to have a stop sign in traffic engineering, in the state of Michigan laws. It does meet the warrants to have a stop sign at the other Bermuda by the Heights Market. That's truly the crux of the issue. And, you know, there's some side benefits because it does move some of the truck noise away, but truly, the reason to move that stop sign is because it's not warranted where it's located. It is warranted where we would like to move it to. And at an unstop, at an uncontrolled intersection, yes, some people will stop for you when you're waiting, but, you know, as a pedestrian, it's not, it is not difficult to cross that street as a pedestrian. I know, I've done it. Sometimes you have to wait, you have cars that do stupid things. I get it. But, this truly is, the, the, the reason to move the stop sign from where it's located to the other Bermuda is based on the traffic engineer study. It is based on the body and all the research of, of traffic engineering science. That's why we would do it. Not to try it or because we think it'd be better.
That wasn't up for discussion the last time. The last time we were doing the test on Woodward Heights, it wasn't about moving the stop sign.
I under, I under, I understand that.
You said that wasn't an option because we had to get an agreement with Ferndale.
That.
So, now it is an option?
Ferndale, after that meeting, passed the traffic control order. So, now, yes, Ferndale has been on board now. So, it's, it's up to us.
What if we added a stop light or something that actually made, you know, like, people wait and have to think, "Oh, maybe this isn't worth it." Because I think if you, we're gonna do testing, then we need to actually do testing. We can't just say, "Let's just move the stop sign and see if it fixes it." I think with the people that are on the street, like Howard, it's, it's, it is an issue having trucks, but it's also an issue having cars now, because nine mile is cut off, you know? We, I don't even know how many additional cars are, are on the street and people trying to turn, turn to go north on Woodward Heights. It's, it, the line of traffic is kind of outrageous. At, at four or five o'clock, it's like, it's, it's, it, it goes almost all the way up to the second stop sign. Oh, now we got another neighbor here. Yeah, so, I think more of the story is that this isn't something that I think we can just say, "Let's just move the stop sign and get over it." I think it's something that we should study. We should ask the residents because otherwise it's just, we're making a, a judgment call based on what you all feel and none of you live on Woodward Heights.
Richard Burr from 48 Woodward Heights. All I'm asking is, what was put in front of you today was a petition to look at closing the street, which essentially is being used as an opening to a discussion about how to approach, how to deal with the issues on Woodward Heights. I don't want it to be used as a attempt to hijack in one evening an agenda to move a stop sign from one place to another. If you want to do that, if you want to study it, if you want to survey the residents about it to get a better idea, that's fine. But, I just think there's a lot of different issues on Woodward Heights that need to be addressed. And so, I agree with Alex about using this as a, an occasion to survey, not necessarily just doing one evening based on a, a comment from one person that then takes on a life of its own to do something. That's it.
Okay, I want to say something. I live on 40 Woodward Heights. I didn't sign the petition. But I just wanted to remind you, Jim, last time I talked with you, you had mentioned about the idea of putting on my property, one of those electronic speed lights so people could see what the speed was. Because he was saying how that would automatically slow people down and make them more aware of what was going on. And I never heard anything after that, so I just wanted to remind you of it.
Sure. And one of the things we find is actually, there, there is no speed problem on Woodward Heights. When we look at the speed data, it's actually one of the slowest streets in the city. Which, I know, I, I understand that the perception of speed when a car's driving by, I, I fully do, I do understand that. But, the average speed on Woodward Heights is the speed limit. So, you know, we could always do a, a, a traffic speed sign, but we're looking at studying Oxford because Oxford does have a speed problem. So, you know, yeah, that, that could be something that was done. But that wasn't, it didn't, the metrics didn't match up with the need to, to do that. So, I'm not closing the door on it, but that's why nothing has really moved forward with that particular item.
Another thing too, if I could say something, can I speak here for a moment? Mainly to Alan and, and Richard too, is, I cross the street when I go for walks all the time from my driveway across to Russell's driveway across the street, and I don't have a problem with that. I feel more safe doing that there than at the stop sign because people run the stop sign. So, if you put a stop for pedestrians and crosswalk sign there, I think that would stop the traffic. And you put a stop sign down at, by the Heights Food Market, when they're coming into the neighborhood, then they realize they're coming into the neighborhood and maybe they'll drive a little more careful. And I, I do agree, they don't, they don't rip through there like they used to. But, you still get the, you know, two out of 10 cars that do. But, the other, you know, eight out of 10 are driving fairly good. It's the trucks taking off from that stop. It's just, oh, just rattles the house. I can't hear the TV, can't talk on the phone, the smell of the exhaust, you know, feeling when they're braking and their tires are hopping from their load, you know, it shakes the house. So, you know, really, the stop sign does need to be moved. I think that would help. And, and I agree on the survey too. Do send a survey out to everybody too. Thank you.
Mayor? Yeah. So, I think what we've just heard is part of the challenge that we have for Woodward Heights is that the opinions are very different on, on what is needed to solve the problem. I think part of the reason the stop sign issue came up is because from a road design perspective, we believe it's probably a good thing to do. And we would put the stop sign in a way that it promotes good crossing of the road at a place where maybe some people have to walk further to cross than they do now. But it would be, it's the better solution for where a stop sign should be and it would work better. Is that a, a good way to say it?
And it's supported by the law and traffic engineering study.
Right. So, that's, I think, why the stop sign issue came up is that it, it, from our perspective, it makes sense to put it there. In terms of what to do next, I think it still, in my mind, makes sense to do that, the, the ordinance for, I'm about to say this wrong, eastbound. And, and then see how that works and then do a survey. I think that's where I've landed in the conversation. Thanks to everyone.
I think it is challenging. I think it's really challenging because we went through this pilot, you know, a year or so ago.
Two years ago, yeah.
Two years ago now. And it is difficult because I feel for all of you as well. But, but we're looking at science, we're looking at feelings and we're trying, you know, we're trying different things and it, it's tough to.
It's a tough street.
It's a really tough street. And it's, it's tough to, you know, it's why we're talking about, so we can try to do something to make improvements.
Right.
Based on science with what we have and.
Right. As Chris said, if, if there were an easy answer.
It would have been done.
It would be done.
Yeah, and I, I think it's a lot, using anecdotes is tough too because your reality is different than others. So, I, I think gathering more data, I know Commissioner Scott is super excited about data. So, I think gathering more data seems like the logical thing to do. And I know that the traffic study supported moving the stop sign. So, that's where we were in the first place. We're kind of back to square one, right?
Yeah.
So, how do you suggest gathering data?
As well.
What do you suggest doing?
Move the stop sign and, and gather data, absolutely.
And that's from Bermuda to.
You're looking for direction, right?
From Bermuda north to the Bermuda south?
Yes. So, yeah, we would need a, I'd need a motion from the.
Trying the right one.
I mean, but would we wait a while to do the survey after like a test period has happened and then figure out what the survey actually should be?
Yeah, I wouldn't call it a test period. I'd call it a, just the adjustment period.
Adjustment period, okay.
So, the people can experience, you know, the different, the difference from moving the stop sign. And again, that, that traffic study was done, the, the stop sign warrant study was done two and a half years ago. It's not, I don't want this to be characterized as kind of a fast decision. I mean, this has been on the table, basically.
Right.
And, and, you know, this is an instance where I know that it's gonna be unpopular with some and it's gonna be popular with some.
Right.
But I'm, I'm, I am, I am comfortable saying that it, it's something that we should do because it is supported by state law, traffic engineering study, traffic engineering science, all of the, you know, decades and decades of research that have gone into what the appropriate use of stop signs is and how you get drivers to actually pay attention to them. So, I'm confident saying that I know that there's gonna be residents who disagree with this, but I'm confident in the recommendation that we do it.
Well, and I know that we still have the, you know, among the myriad issues, we have trucks, we have SEMTA buses, we have a number of other things that are also, we're gonna work on with.
I have also been in contact with SMART. Howard, I don't know if the buses have dropped off since last week, but.
No, they're, today they're, they're 401. I'll get the numbers off the bus. I'll get the numbers off the bus.
Do, yes, do that, get the numbers and send them to me, because I've been in contact with SMART. They, they, they're not supposed to be going down the street, so let me know. I will continue to pass that on.
Mine was 30, 20, I don't know what the other one was.
Okay, start, get me numbers.
Is this a nine-mile issue with the?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, it has increased since nine-mile closed down, right?
It, it's about the same, maybe another bus or two.
Okay.
They've been coming through for a while.
All right, well, they're not supposed to. Keep the numbers coming.
Thank you.
I'm writing too much, sorry.
Come on.
Okay, so let's try this. Please correct me. Mayor, I move that we move the stop sign from Bermuda north to Bermuda south on Woodward Heights, and that we perform a survey three months following the move, to study the opinions of PR residents about the change, and also to study the petition related to closing Woodward Heights to through traffic.
And did you want us to bring a, a traffic control order in October for the eastbound trucks?
In addition to add the traffic control order for trucks eastbound on Woodward Heights. Thank you.
Is there?
I second that, yeah.
Any further discussion?
I guess if you're taking out the stop sign, what would you do with this, like, would, you remember you're talking about cutting off this, or slowing the traffic down? You're just going to take it out and just let them run from stop to the stop sign? Nothing's going to happen there?
So, it's not really the time for this?
No, no.
We'll collect speed, we'll collect post-move speed data and see what the, see what the reality is, and then if something needs to be done, we'll do it.
So, just wait a few months until something happens?
No, we'll, we'll put the radar counter out there and measure, measure what traffic does in response to the change. We have the data from before, we'll see what the data from afterward says, and we'll follow the data.
May we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adjourn. Okay, City Managers' Report.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
I will make this quick. Save the date, October 5th, Millage Information Open House at 7:00 PM at Four Ridge, that's a Tuesday. This is for the Water Infrastructure Millage, which, you know, is also a thing that's coming up. So, we, we've done presentations, we had the town hall in the spring, there's fact sheets available at cityofpleasantridge.org backslash water, about the reason why we have to do this, and what the impact will be if the millage passes. So, I, I suggest residents get familiar with that, educate yourself about this request and why we're doing it. If you've been to Gainsborough Park, I think you'll see that the pavilion is, is 98% there.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, it's a really great space. We've got a couple little details. We've got metalwork coming, with some decorative screens that are going to go in between some of those openings in the back. And then, also, there's going to be grates on the fireplace.
So, I should not bring wood there now?
Please don't. We don't have a fire basket in there for a reason.
You have to stop me.
However, one of the things that I think the Rec Commission will be doing this winter, will be developing policies for the two pavilions, both the pool and Gainsborough Park. So, you know, how do you rent it? How much is it going to cost? Are we going to allow people to, you know, rent the use of the fireplace? What's deposit going to be, so that it's not left in a trashed condition on the SAF asset claim? All of those things we have to work through. So, that, the Rec Commission will be working through that over the winter, and Shawnee and I will be working on some, some drafts of that for them to consider. So, we'll report back on that when we have some more information about how that's going to work. And one of the things I've been talking with Tim about is actually, the city being able to provide firewood, if people want to.
Oh, that's cool.
Rent the use of the fireplace, we could.
Cool idea.
Yeah, and even maybe buying a, a log splitter, so that when we cut down trees.
Tim will love that. Tim is multi-talented.
There's nothing to him.
Whitman, Whitman, Tim.
I, I mean, we got big change, I'll go over and split some logs. Not a bad way to spend an afternoon. So, you know, we're looking through all of those possibilities. And finally, tomorrow is the big day, when we start accepting marijuana facility license applications.
Yippee, tomorrow.
So, then, the real fun begins. So, we'll have to go through the process of vetting the applications, and then they will be brought to the commission at a later date. I'm not going to commit to a date when we're bringing them to you, because that depends on factors out of our control, the completeness of the application, how many we get, what, how much work we have to do to vet all of them, but.
Interesting.
Have you been getting a lot of interest?
We've been getting a lot of phone calls. We've been getting phone calls from people asking if we're going to allow for marijuana businesses and buildings that are in Ferndale. We've been getting calls about.
The answer is yes.
Yes. We've been getting calls about when we're going to change our zoning map, so that they can do a marijuana dispensary somewhere that's not zoned for it right now. We've been getting all kinds of interesting calls. So, yes, I look forward to hopefully someday, being past those. But, we'll see.
Okay. Fascinating.
Does anyone have any questions for me on anything?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, just actually a request. The presentation about the cycle track was so good, could we just throw it on the website separate from the meeting minutes?
Sure.
It was great.
It was good.
I will, do you want me to tell you where I put it, once I find a home for it?
I'll, I'll find it.
Should we just try to find it?
You know what? We have a, we have a complete streets and traffic calming section on the website, so go to Community Development. If you're looking for it, go to Departments, Community Development, and that's your, that's your link to everything.
Awesome.
Streets and traffic. So, I'll put it somewhere, somewhere on there.
Beautiful. Okay, so October 5th, up at Four Ridge, 7:00 PM, will be a Water Infrastructure Millage Discussion.
Yeah, so we're calling it an open house. I don't plan on doing the entire dog and pony presentation that I've, I've done in the past on this, but I will. I'll have it with me, and we can go through it if, if people want to.